To order the regular meeting of the Beaverton City Council, city recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Duggar.
Here.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Here.
Counselor Hassan is absent. Counselor Kimmy.
Here.
Counselor Teeter.
Here.
Thank you, Kevin. Counselor Tivnan.
Here.
And I believe the mayor will be attending, just she'll be arriving a little late.
Okay, thank you. We'll begin tonight's agenda with visitor comments, then we will move on to this evening's four proclamations. The consent agenda, one presentation, three public hearings, and council new business. The city requires pre-registration for online and in-person visitor comments at council meetings. Registration closed at 12 noon today. All registration was conducted through the city recorder's office via email or phone in preparation for this meeting. There is one person registered to comment at tonight's meeting. As a reminder, visitor comments provide the opportunity for community to speak about matters even if they are not on the agenda. Visitor comments are limited to three minutes for each person. Visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding the comments. At this, as this is a time for the council to hear from the community. If follow-up is needed, our city manager and city recorder are taking notes. We have a written comment register, but I believe Jim Springetti is here?
Yes.
Okay. It is your turn to speak. You have three minutes to address the council. We will start the timer when you start speaking.
Okay, well, thank you, counselors. I appreciate this chance to speak with you. My name is Jim Springetti, and I live in the Hemp Street Heights neighborhood, which is on the eastern boundary of Beaverton and right next to the former Alpin Rose Dairy and Farm. The Alpin Rose property is in the jurisdiction of the city of Portland, and the developers proposed to turn this 51-acre site into a subdivision with 263 homes. This plan for Raleigh Crest is now being reviewed by the city of Portland, and a decision hearing is expected on September 25th. I and many of my neighbors would like the city of Beaverton to intervene in this process and prevent this large subdivision from punching a busy road into our neighborhood. This will create safety and congestion problems for decades to come. Mitigating these impacts will never be easier than it is now, before project planning is finalized. We have heard over and over from Beaverton city staff and city manager Hariyama that Beaverton is powerless to prevent this from happening. But we don't understand why Beaverton does not have the authority to control what happens to a Beaverton street in a Beaverton neighborhood. Why doesn't the city have autonomy within its own boundaries? We ask that our elected Beaverton officials support us as we strive to protect our neighborhood from parties who would ignore our interests while pursuing their own. This street connection to our quiet neighborhood would create an outlet for westbound traffic between Raleigh Crest and Olson Road. This plan has not been adequately studied to determine what the impacts would be, but clearly there would be hundreds of additional trips using this route each day. This would funnel traffic down Dover Lane, which is a local street serving as direct access for residences along the route. It is a 28-foot-wide road that often has cars parked on both sides. The new intersection would have cars turning onto a steep, curving hill with poor sightlines. This flow-through traffic would dramatically alter the character of our neighborhood. It would, in effect, take a local street and turn it into a neighborhood collector with no accommodation for that repurposing. I wish you would visit this neighborhood and see for yourself what's at stake. Drive up the Dover Lane Hill and see the stub road where the new intersection would be located. It just does not make sense as the only western outlet for such a huge development. The response by Beaverton officials to the developers' traffic study is to suggest that some speed bumps might be created, or to note that the poor sightlines of the new intersection need to be mitigated. That doesn't even begin to address our concerns. These streets were not designed for this level of traffic and cannot be modified to accommodate it. I think the Alpin Rose property is appropriate for a thoughtful, reasonably scaled housing project, but this development is oversized for the transportation network that it would tie into, and developers are proposing to have our Beaverton neighborhood bear a heavy burden for their aggressive scaling of this project. Looks like my time is over.
Okay.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. That concludes our visitor comments for this evening. Next, we have four proclamations to read this evening. I'll read the first one. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, whereas our community's success depends on making sure that all Beaverton residents feel safe and welcome, and foreign-born Beaverton residents are in, are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are Beaverton residents united in our efforts to build a stronger community. And whereas there has never been a more important time for communities to unite and show that they are welcoming to everyone, including immigrants and refugees. And whereas we condemn hate, intolerance, and racism, and reaffirm our commitment to the values of equity, inclusion, justice, and compassion. And whereas welcoming week will be celebrated nationally under the theme of Where We Belong, which calls us to reflect on how and why belonging occurs, and the ways we can break barriers so that places can foster belonging for all, including immigrants and refugees. And whereas Beaverton will proudly celebrate its ninth annual local welcoming week this year in collaboration with community partners through events that celebrate the contributions of newcomers and uplift the role communities play in fostering welcome for everyone. And whereas Beaverton was declared a welcoming city and member of the National Welcoming Cities and Counties Initiative in April 2015, now therefore I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim September 13 through 22nd, 2024 as Beaverton Welcoming Week in the city of Beaverton, and call upon the people of Beaverton to join together to build a stronger, more united community. And we'll have Counselor Duggar read the next proclamation.
Whereas the city of Beaverton and its residents are vulnerable to the impacts of natural and human-made disasters, and whereas being prepared for disasters must be undertaken at the individual, family, and business level, and whereas National Preparedness Month is held each September and is designed to encourage Americans to take simple steps to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and communities. And whereas the 2024 National Preparedness Month will focus on Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities, highlighting why it is important for the diverse community to prepare for disasters and build resilience before disaster strikes. And whereas the city offers disaster preparedness information and training opportunities throughout the year to enable us, our citizens, to become better prepared. And whereas citizens of the city of Beaverton will benefit from joining with the nation's citizens in embracing this valuable opportunity to learn of ways we can prepare for an emergency and assist others in the event of a disaster of any size and duration. Now therefore I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Preparedness Month in the city of Beaverton, and encourage all city of Beaverton residents to seriously contemplate the state of their personal preparedness, strive to meet the challenges of increasing their self-reliance, and recognize the need of to provide provisions for their families in case of any emergency.
Thank you. We'll have the cert members come up and receive the proclamation, and maybe you have somebody to make a small remark, or, yeah, please come on up? Should we take a picture and then?
Sure.
Is somebody's gonna make a remark, or?
Counselors, I'm Bill Blair. I'm a member of Beaverton Cert, and for the next less than two minutes, I get to be, less than one minute, all right, I get to be the designated BIO for Beaverton Cert. But a thank the council, Mayor, for the proclamation and recognition of the importance of preparedness in our modern world here in Beaverton. We appreciate our emergency manager, Cole, and Captain Ed from Beaverton Police, whom we are proud to serve with. And we really appreciate the support of the many, many citizens of this community who have volunteered to be prepared and to step in in the event there is an emergency that we are rather uniquely trained and capable of dealing with, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in today. Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Tivnan read the proclamation.
Thank you. I'm reading this proclamation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor. Whereas cancer is the number-one cause of death by disease among children and adolescents in the U.S., and an estimated 9,620 kids under the age of 15 will be diagnosed with cancer in 2024. And whereas one in five of these children will not survive, and at least two-thirds of those who do survive will suffer from chronic health problems such as heart weakness or failure, infertility, physical disability, cognitive impairment, and secondary cancers, most of which are not caused by the cancer itself, but by the treatment. And whereas there are approximately 430,000 adult survivors of childhood cancer in the U.S., most of whom are in need of ongoing medical care. And whereas Sam Day was diagnosed with Ewing's sarcoma at the age of nine and passed away on August 27, 2016, at the age of 15, just, sorry, it's my son's age, just a week before his freshman year at Sunset High School. And whereas the Sam Day Foundation was established, I'm sorry, by Sam's mother, Lorna Day, a little over a year after his passing, with the mission of advancing research and providing wellness resources and support for kids with cancer. And whereas the Sam Day Foundation has since funded over 1.4 million in research and provides kids diagnose of sarcomas or brain tumors in the Pacific Northwest with wellness boxes. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim September 1, 2024, and September 2024 respectively, as Sam Day Day and Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Beaverton in recognition of the extraordinary courage and resilience of Sam and in honor of the tireless work of the Sam Day Foundation in advancing research and supporting kids with cancer. Sorry, can't give me these heart lines.
Do you want to come and receive the proclamation and make a remark afterwards? Take a picture.
Thank you so much. I'm Lorna Day, the founder and executive director of the Sam Day Foundation, and also very proudly Sam's mom. I just want to say thank you for this proclamation and for bringing attention and awareness to childhood cancer and childhood cancer research. There are a lot of families, I'm in touch with a lot of families, who are dealing with childhood cancer research, and we feel like this is neglected, a neglected cause and a neglected issue. We feel like our kids have been forgotten. When Sam was diagnosed in 2010, he received five different types of chemotherapy, all delivered at very, very high doses, as high as his body could tolerate. The oldest of these drugs was developed in 1959, and the newest of these drugs was developed in 1983. And this is the same protocol that kids are receiving now, and that's not true, that's not only true for his cancer, but for a variety of other pediatric cancers. So we just don't think that's okay. So we launched the Sam Day Foundation to advance pediatric cancer research so that kids like Sam will have a better chance at survival. So my kid was, he had a quirky sense of humor, and he thought about interesting things, and he was fixated on the number 37, and he decided it was the forgotten number. Mom, if you ask someone to choose a number between 1 and 100, nobody picks 37. He was convinced. Plus, it's obviously a prime number, so it just doesn't get used as much, right? So he decided to bring attention to number 37. His Instagram handle was iamsam37. When he wanted an iPhone, he wrote me 37 reasons why I should have an iPhone. Well, I don't know what compels someone to have compassion for the forgotten numbers of the world, but we care about the forgotten cancers of the world. So this month, in September, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, we have launched the 37 Mile Challenge, and we have about 550 participants trying to move 37 miles in the month of September because we promised that we will not forget pediatric cancer. So a lot of these participants are in the city of Beaverton. You may see some shirts with a big gold 37 on them, and you'll know what that's about. So I just want to thank you for joining us in this effort, bringing attention and awareness to childhood cancer, because one, we are going to make progress, and we're going to make a difference, and one day more kids like Sam will survive and live well. So thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. Let's have a counselor.
All right. Proclamation on behalf of the city of Beaverton. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th. And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan in 1988. And whereas Beaverton is home to many people whose ancestors came from Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean, and Spain. And whereas September 15th is significant as the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Mexico and Chile celebrate Independence Day on September 16th and September 18th respectively. And whereas people of Hispanic descent have contributed to our shared prosperity and culture throughout the history of Beaverton, the state of Oregon, and the United States. And whereas Hispanic Americans continue to be crucial to the vitality, hometown livability, and growth of our community. And whereas Beaverton is proud to join the nation in celebrating the rich culture and history of Hispanic heritage in Oregon as we dedicate ourselves to working together to address the challenges that still face our Hispanic population. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Beaverton, Oregon, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Beaverton. I think we have someone to receive this one as well.
Yes, please come on out.
Thank you so much for this proclamation and for inviting the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber to accept this on behalf of the Hispanic community. This month is extremely important to the Hispanic community as it reinforces and reminds us that we belong and that we contribute to the community. The community of Beaverton benefits from the huge economic input of Latinos, but also with the richness of our culture. Thank you, city of Beaverton, for your support, investment, and commitment to the Latino and Hispanic community. Muchas gracias, es un honor.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. That concludes our proclamation portion of the meeting for this evening. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Council President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Removed by Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg and seconded by Counselor Duggar. Is there any discussion? Signal comments. City recorder, please take the vote by roll call.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty? No. Motion passes.
Thank you. We have a presentation tonight. Next item on the agenda is the presentation. The presentation is regarding the 2024, 23, 24 Youth Services Officer Review, and will be given by Captain Mastri Polito. As a reminder, the purpose of the presentation is to provide information to the council. While counselors may ask clarifying questions about the presentation itself, this is not a time to engage in back-and-forth policy development dialogue. Presenters, you may begin when you are ready.
Counselors, thank you for having us here tonight. It's my pleasure to bring to you the 2023, 2024 YSO review, just in time for the 2024, 2025 school year. As a parent, we're all busy all summer long, so here we go. Right now, I'd like to introduce you to our newest member of our team. On the screen here is Officer Diego Valderas. And while I think I could do some justice, I'd like to have Officer Valderas maybe introduce himself to you tonight. And Diego Valderas.
All right.
I think we can back and listen to Diego at the end.
Yes, we can come back and introduce him. Okay, our first slide. So in conjunction with some of the seat change recommendations that came out a couple of years ago, along with some recommendations from council, Counselor Duggar, for example, about neurodivergence care, and some recommendations from the school district, the YSOs are really focused this year on enhancing their training. They've conducted 511 hours of additional training this school year, in addition to their state certification requirements. Some of the highlights here in yellow are ones that were touched on either by seat chains or by council. Title IX and gender issues. Officer Valderas, as you just saw, went to the SRO Basic School. Partnering with school staff and student homelessness was important. Both the entire team went to the National Association of School Resource Officers Conference, as well as the Oregon School Resource Officers Conference. Autism and a Guide for First Responders was a big one, because we often respond to the schools of the kids that sometimes run from the off-campus, and we're challenged to go find them, so it's really helpful for the officers to know how to deal with this population. Applied suicide intervention skills is assist program that's offered through the school district our guys have been to. Ethics in policing, confrontational bias, bias-based policing, behavioral health, crisis training. Just to touch on some of the training that the officers have done. I want to touch real quick on the role of the YSO. Again, in the seat change report, it really focused on defining what the role of the YSO was in the schools. Obviously, safety and security is an easy one. We're there to patrol the campus and the neighborhood around the campus, so the officers do that. Mentorship and education, they get to be a positive role model to the students. They interact with the kids at lunches, at the playgrounds, at the sporting events, and it's an opportunity to build relationships. One of the seat change recommendations was the way the police interact with marginalized communities. We're often called to events in the worst times of people's lives. It's not hard to understand that when you see a police officer, it takes you back to those moments. So it's challenging for us to make headway in communities that don't generally have trust for police officers. This gives our officers an opportunity to interact with marginalized, underrepresented communities in a positive light. They get to know the officer, and the connections we make today is a diversity you will see in the police department in years to come. Crisis response, obviously, the active shooter, the natural disaster situations. The role that the YSO plays in that is important. There was a situation at Beaverton High School this year where there was an individual that tried to come in contact with some of the female students. Patrol responded to the call, and by the time patrol got there, this individual had left the campus. The YSO, who was intimately aware of the video capabilities that the school had implemented, was able to go into the school, get onto the video, get video of this individual who had not only been at the school that day, but had been there prior, to try to interact with the kids. He was then able to get that photo out to the patrol officers, and we actually located him and arrested him down the street. So it's those intimate relationships, not only with the students, but with the staff and the technology, that makes this valuable. Do you remember the school's threat assessment multidisciplinary team? And I've got a slide to kind of go more than that. But more importantly, we define what we're not. We're not the disciplinarian. We're not the school counselor. We're not the school psychologist. So the things that need to be dealt with at the school level are definitely dealt with at the school level. The MDT threat assessment team. So the, basically, I can explain this. Everyone's relatively familiar with our Be Sober Program, where you have that multidisciplinary team that comes together to assess situations and do the best response for those participants. The MDT assessment team is quite similar. It's made up of law enforcement, teachers, school administrators. There'll be counselors, psychologists, parents. If the student involved has outside medical care, we've taken in doctors, their own psychiatrist, psychologist, other agencies if they're in the juvenile justice system, and more importantly, the student himself has a place at that table. The YSOs participated in 59 Level 1 threats this year. And to kind of give you an example of a Level 1 threat, a kid is overheard on the bus saying that I've had enough of the school and one of these days I'm just going to blow this place up. That's a Level 1 threat. Assessments are made, contact with the students are done, kind of a higher-level involvement with the parents and the school counselor to see where this kid's at. If it's deemed that the threat is just an idle statement that was made and there's no credibility to it, that would be a Level 1 threat. The YSOs also participated in 10 Level 2 threats. So that's a student that says, I've had enough with student X, and when I come to school, I'm going to shoot him. Those are also Level 1, but we then get deeper into the psychology of the student. If the counselors are telling the student's having a rough time, if they've been bullied, if the parents are telling you that the situation's changed at home, behavior's changed at home. The YSOs have the ability to go into the house and make a determination if there are firearms there or not. We can secure the firearms if they're there or not. I'm proud to say that of the 59 events that the YSOs participated in, absolutely none of them resulted in criminal or law enforcement activity. Nothing went to juvenile justice system. Everything was handled at the school level with the parents and counselors, once we made everyone safe. For reference, the FBI received 51 school threats for the entire state of Oregon, and just as ours, none of those resulted in any kind of access to the criminal justice system. So everything was dealt with restoratively to make sure these kids are safe and in a good place. And then the motto we always use to tell the kids is if you see something, say something, just like the airport. The YSOs responded to 2,388 calls for service this past year. They deal with 37 schools. That comprised Beaverton School District as well as the private school system. We service over 25,000 students and staff every day. Some of the bigger calls here, you'll see community engagement. That includes sporting events, dances, pickup and drop-off, patrolling in and around the schools on extra patrols. The consultations are between the officer and staff on a situation deemed by the Code of Conduct as questionable. A lot of times it's dealt with a phone call, and the officer may or may not actually respond to the school. And then a follow-up you'll see on here, that's where an officer's already been to the school to investigate something, and he may need to go back and maybe question staff or take some photos, rather than creating another call for service. It's just in there as a follow-up. So it was related to a previous call for service. That's just a quick summary of the calls. They took 344 police reports. So of the 2,300 calls for service, they deemed that 344 of them, the situation warranted documentation, some form of a police report. So we get the involved individuals' names, birthdays, and we actually document the situation. Sometimes they're just referred to the juveniles, sometimes they're referred back to the school district. What I've tried to do here is kind of overlay, in the blue is the percentage of the reports that the officers took, and the yellow is the demographics as provided by the Beaverton School District. We tried some, we're trying to keep in mind, this is not an apples-to-apples scope because 31 of the schools aren't part of the school district, so they don't report demographics. And currently, the officers are documenting it based on the race they perceive the student to be. They don't ask the question. So what the officers are reporting in their police report may not be exactly what the family reports to the school district. So it's not a one-for-one comparison, but we tried to get close just to kind of see what it looked like. Reports taken by reporting person, we wanted to see who was calling the officer to the school. No surprise, school staff, they interact with the children every day, all day long, so we would expect to see a large number of staff calls our way. The other large one we get is Washington County Department of Human Services. Those are generally some kind of investigation into the welfare of the child that we received. Other law enforcement agencies, sometimes it's parents, sometimes it's students, other times it's the juvenile department, who may ask us to go check on a kid after having a hard time connecting with them at home. Go to the school and help out with that situation. We wanted to see by gender, just do another comparison. Seventy percent of the calls that we took, the reports we took, included males. A 23% female. The ones that are listed in there as unidentified are, would be a criminal mischief call at the school where we don't have the suspect, like we don't know who it is. So we would list that person as unidentified. Again, just as the officers don't inquire as to the race of the student, they don't inquire to the gender. They're not gathering that information. Trying to figure out if we were in the ballpark, I was able to pull some activity from BPD as a whole. I looked at arrest data for the entire time that the school was in session, and our back-and-forth between male and females was 75% male, 24% female, and less than 1% unidentified. So we're kind of in the ballpark of what the folks in patrol are seeing. And with these reports, keep in mind that the student, when I pull the data, sometimes they're the victim listed in the report, sometimes they're the subject of the report, sometimes they're the reporting person of the report. So just because there's a police report doesn't mean the kid's in trouble. They're just, I'm documenting when we're identifying a student in the report. I want to look at arrests. That was another one that came up. There's the school-to-prison pipeline, it comes up quite often. Of the 2,388 calls for service, we had one probable cause arrest, and I'll go into that. So what a probable cause arrest is, is an officer has more likely than not reason believe that a person, a crime was committed and that an individual committed this crime. That's an actual in custody arrest. Of the 2,300 calls for service, we had one actual in custody arrest. Twelve-year-old male, student attacked another student and threatened him with an eight-inch knife. That young man was generally taken into more of a protective custody. It was deemed he was a danger to himself, his family, and the students. Contacted Washington County Juvenile, may have custody. Restoratively on the back end, he was. When we do this, there's a police report written that's referred out to the Washington County Juvenile Division. So there's a division within the DA's office that handles all of these calls. Our team and their team work very close together. They meet regularly. There's a member from the juvenile department that meets with our team every Wednesday. Once we send it out there, the process doesn't end on the restorative. DA's office is constantly working with the families of the victims and the families of the subjects and the families of everyone involved to try and find alternative solutions for what's going on. Because at the end of the day, we want to bring these kids back into the school system better than when we found them. So just because we refer it out to Washington County Juvenile doesn't mean that he's going to go to the reform school or he's in another situation. The restorative component continues on the back end. The other arrest we had, there's a warrant and detainer. So warrants are issued by a judge, and it's a mandatory arrest situation. It's a shell arrest. So we had several instances this year. One was a detainer issued by a probation officer. Principal was aware that the student was on probation, student was having a rough time, doing some things that he probably shouldn't have been doing, and they were in communication, and the probation office issued a detainer for us to bring the kid in and kind of reset the process, kind of get him back. There were two students out of the tiger notified us that had felony warrants. Again, those are signed by a judge. An officer does not have an option not to arrest. We took those men into custody on that, and that was referred back out to juvenile. And then two, there was an assault, couple kids got into with another kid. Both were on probation, and the juvenile system wanted us to take them in. And again, try to stop the downward slide of bad behavior, kind of get things back on. So for the whole year, one, two, three times, so pretty low numbers, shows that we're spending a lot of time on not charging these kids. One kind of story comes to mind, there was a situation where a girl's AirPods, Apple AirPods, went missing, and she tracked them to another student's house. She then contacted the YSO to file a report, and the YSO was able to navigate with the original owner and the finder of the AirPods, get the property returned back, and no charges were filed or pressed, and everything was done. So the YSOs have the opportunity to spend that time, that extra time, to find alternative solutions, which shows in the numbers we have here, which is very, very few in custody arrest. So we got 2,300 calls, 344 police reports, and we wanted to try to see other areas when we're going to school and when we're getting called to the school that doesn't really generate into a police report, and these are kind of our consultations. So these are similar to reports. There were 449 instances where we were called to the school regarding a student where no police report was taken. So these could be situations where there might be, like the iPod theft might be one, be criminal mischief in the school, where we're just consulting with the administration to see if there's a solution that we may be able to. Trying to capture the same data as far as the demographics here, again, keep in mind, ours is perceived versus their actual, and then you've got 54 of the 499 reports were from non-BSD schools who don't report, so it's hard to just get a true, the blue is everything we put in the system, but there's not a one-for-one. We wanted to try to find by source and by gender. Again, staff would make sense that they're calling us the most. Other situations are students and parents, DHS and other agencies are giving us a call as far as race and how we got there. This is the best part of the whole year, I think, this collaboration with the school district. So again, going back to the seat change report, they really wanted to define and have consistency across the district as to when should the YSO respond to the school. The school district went ahead and they took the entire student code of conduct, and this is just a sampling of it, where if there's a violation of the code, go across. If it's green, then the YSO is contacted. If it's red, the YSO is never contacted. And those yellows, where there's a consultation, those are going to be those 449 times where we were called that nothing came of it. Some of them you'll see here on this one, there's an assault where the police are always contacted. Academic integrity, if the student's using a little too much ChatGPT, we don't get called for that. If the student is truant, we don't get called for that. If they find drugs on the student, we get called to pick up the drugs, but we don't get called for the student. So this has been great. This puts every administrator, all the schools on the same page. It puts the YSOs on the same page, so when they're communicating with the school, then they know right out of the gate whether they should be there or whether they should not. And you know, at times the YSOs push back and say, no, it doesn't violate this part of the code. So this has really helped out. Our new look on the left, I'm proud to show you our new YSO patrol vehicle, if you haven't seen it floating around yet. There's three silver ones and a gray one. They're a little different than the traditional cars we have now. What I like about this as a parent, I've gone to a school and you see a patrol car out front, and your heart stops for a quick second. I've done it. But as you get to know this, and you see that silver car out there, you're going to drive by and you're going to go, oh, that's just the YSO. He's here. And then our new look to the right, you got, this was taken at the end of last year with some of our team, and they're all sporting their very fancy kicks that the kids love for some reason. I think, well, we tried the gray shirts, and they hated them. We tried a blue shirt to match the bike team, and they were ridiculed by the students to no end. I mean, it was sad. I'd never seen police officers come back and need counseling. They wore the blue shirt. It was terrible, terrible. So she gave us the okay. I went, my kid goes to mountainside, I had picked up a pair of black and Carolina Blues, Officer Potter had a pair, and we just tried it, and they loved it. And the kids are buying them now, and parents are buying them now. It's kind of a thing. Who would have thought? But that's our new look. Looking ahead, we've got a new dashboard that we worked on last year, so hopefully my time of incorporating all of the data from multiple spread databases and putting them in spreadsheets and doing pivot tables and then bringing them over in the PowerPoints may be a thing of the past. The new dashboard looks great. It'll give us more real-time information with the schools, and we can really dig down into their. We want to do a more frequent and relevant social media process as soon as our technical issues are resolved. I'll give you a taste of that. We want to continue the outreach with, in the community and have those positive interactions with every member of the community in the school district. And we're working on enhanced summer programs coming up in 2025. Okay, we can try to play. Want to try the first one or the last one?
I think it works.
I swear every time I'm at this table, this happens. Good evening, Council. Chief Jepson. I wanted, it doesn't look like we're going to get this working, but I wanted to explain what it is so you have an understanding. You know, we have multiple YSOs assigned to the various schools, and what we've done recently is we've taken each of those YSOs and kind of profiled them in their schools with a quick 56-second bio of them, and so they get to talk to the kids and kind of tell the kids who they are, why they want to be a YSO, kind of the relevance of the position that they've signed up to do within the schools. And we're showcasing those on social media as well. So this one of Officer Valderas just went live today on our platform. The one of Officer Potter, which was the other one you were going to get to see, has been on the platform for a couple weeks now, so we'll give you an opportunity to see them, but they're meant to be a new way to kind of connect with the school district, the kids, as well as the general community of Beaverton to see who these officers are that sign up to do this very important job. I think we're going to shelf this for the sake of time.
Time, yeah.
And I believe his presentation's over, so I'm going to turn it back over to him and let you have the floor to answer or ask some questions that hopefully we can answer for you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I think we have some questions from our counselors. Counselor Hartmeier Prigg, you're up.
Thank you. I just have one clarifying question. For the reports that are deemed a threat, did they, those come through like the normal report channel, and then they are designated as a threat based on like your analysis of it, or does a threat get reported in a different way?
There are several different ways. There's online, so some of them coming from a parent. Kid goes home and tells his parent they overheard something. Some will come from the school. There's a tip line, there's some coming through. So there's a number of different avenues where the initial threat, and sometimes it comes, we'll hear it first. It's not uncommon for the student to go home, and then after the school's out, they report to a parent, and then they'll contact patrol, and then our team will get involved right out of the get-go. So we sometimes know it before the school does, and other situations, the school knows it first, and we'll get called in. And then that initial stage, the stat one, level ones, is just really where you start peeling back the onion layers to see what's going on.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I laughed that your officers were made fun of. I'm sorry I laughed that your officers were made fun of, but I also think that's a sign of acceptance by the students.
They were and I appreciate it.
All right. Counselor Dugger?
Thank you for, for sharing this with us. I think transparency is one of the hardest things that we have because it exposes us, but it's one of the most important things. So let me start with a thank you. Couple of questions, clarifying. Do we ever have self-reported demographics? And the reason I think that's important for me is we got a, one of the things we were looking at originally with the refinements behind the program was are we policing too heavily versus core areas? And, and one of those core areas is like our LGBTQ students and, and like that seems to me a gap. So I know that's really hard for us to assume, right? So are there like self-reporting?
It's a great question. If a student identifies in a certain way, that's how we report it. So we, the challenge is that the school district doesn't capture that information on their side. So there's no, there's really no one for one on that. But surely if a student identifies in a certain way, we'll a hundred percent capture it that way.
Okay, yeah, because that would be really helpful to see. And then just to ask, as you continue, I know you clarified that some of the, the race and gender data included sort of the victim and the subject. If we could see breakdowns of that, I think that'd be really helpful in the dashboard. I know this was kind of version one of that. So as we continue to evolve that, because when I first initially looked at this, I was like, oh, man, this is telling a story. But then when I read through the notes and saw that it was, that included the victims and the subjects and like any, any kind of identifying data, I was like, wow, those are, that's a very different story than I told myself in my brain when I first saw it. So I think we could clarify that. One other asked as far as the data that I think would be really helpful for me, I want to know if the, the staff is, like I saw your comment on the presentation about the staff that are making strides, and when I say staff, I mean BSD staff, right, of, of limiting the use. And I know we put some rules in the, the code of conduct or we partner, we asked the school district to do that, right? But I'm wondering like if we can find out, is that being appropriate, appropriately used and then track it over time? Because what I'd love to see, right, is, is progress, that number going down, right? The number of times they call you guys for the wrong reason, where you correct them, track it, and let's, let's see if it's going down over time. Because that might present educational opportunities for us to continue to partner with them and continue to drive down the, the policing to where it's, 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 you know, minimal or targeted correctly. And, and I would love to see that in the dashboard. A final thing I think for me is communications on the dashboard. I would love to see us widely, widely, widely communicate this to parents all over, you know, throw it in the newsletter, like, and the reason being is like, I'm not an expert on policing policy, I'm not a school board member, I'm not a parent, right? But there's a lot, there's tens of thousands of all of those people in our community and I want their opinions. And like, I, I want to be educated by them so we can craft better policy, right, that is, that, that works for our police, our students, our teachers, our parents, like all of those things, right? Like, and I just don't have, you know, I'm out in the community trying to learn that myself, but I just want to, like, tell me a, a solid communication plan and then with a like, hey, here's where you provide feedback, right? Like, I, I actually want to learn that because I think the best policy will come out of that. And then if you guys want to indulge me, I do have one question that's not data-related. When, when you're talking about arrests and police reports, can you tell me what happens to the kids as far as the parents? And this is, let me, let me explain my fear. Like, kids are kids sometimes, right? And, and if they're forced to make a state, or if they're asked to make a statement or something without their parents there, you know, the people that are going to pay for the lawyers, that would make me really uncomfortable. So help me understand, like, am I like just going off into La La Land there?
No, no, no. It's a great question. So on the ones that were the warrant or detainer, there was no questioning of the student. It was just a arrest situation. So on those, and we're very conscious because the kids are going to return to the school. So that we don't want to, we try to minimize the stigma. Student don't go get called to the office, parent will be contacted by the school, we'll casually bring the student outside and very try to low-key the entire situation. The office staff will work with us on that. On the eleven-year-old, there was no questioning, no interrogation of that student. In conjunction with working with juvenile, best course of action for this person.
Is that by policy though? And that's where I'm getting at. Like, that's what I, I just want to, like, I know you guys are.
I just want to remind you that it is a presentation. We're not in work sessions, so just want to make sure we stick to questions.
Yeah, oh, okay, never mind.
Oh, I was going to try to answer for you in a different way, is that one of the goals of creating this youth services model is to specialize those officers in all things related to youth. And in our business, specializing in youth law and things surrounding youth law goes a long way with what your question is, so that our officers are well-trained on when they can and can't speak to a student involving a criminal investigation and whether a parent comes alongside in those situations. And that really hinges on the level of criminality that's attached to what they're investigating. And so that's, that's kind of, I'm answering it this way because I think it's important to, to remind us that in the last two years, we've switched our model from a traditional school resource officer model to a year-around youth services model that provides our officers with that robust training, that extra five hundred and eleven hours, so they're really experts in the field of how to navigate these very complex investigations that you're alluding to.
Yeah, because I mean, at, at the end of the day, like, that's the data that I need to like, because for the, you know, to have the conversations, right, it's like, how are we focusing on it? And I don't even know how to ask that question, right, from a data perspective, and that's kind of what I was getting at. So thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Tiffna?
Counselor Dugger, can I touch on my point about the admin part of this, the, the school district side of when they're picking up the phone and making the call, admin and staff? I was curious on that note, and then I have a comment after that. What are the touchpoints to circle back around with them? Because obviously this, that, especially this first year, but also the first several years, is all about just instilling good habits and moving away from the old structure and system and processes. So what does that look like to continually share that information back and forth? Are there check-ins or are you giving them a report like this as well?
Yes, I presented this information to the school board. The, the school district has a director of public safety, meets with our officers weekly to go over kind of a, everything that's going on in the past week. They're having those conversations. They train, they just had a training not too long ago where the YSOs from both Beaverton and Washington County were with the administrators right before school, they were with the principals and the vice principals. So they're building those relationships of getting to know each other and fine-tuning this as we go. Like, those yellows, maybe they're a little more closer to green, maybe they're a little more closer to red. So we're, we're hashing that out, but there's constant, constant communication between us.
Okay, thank you. And just to comment on this, I took office in January twenty twenty-one. I got elected in the primary in May of twenty twenty. So this issue was front and center from before I took office and was the first thing to keep me up at night in this job. And I think all of us back then, we didn't know what this was going to result in. This is before the consultant was brought in, this is before the reporting that we received, this is before all of the work sessions. And to see it a year later, I have to say, I'm, I'm so inspired by the work that has been done because, and I'm, I would love to, to hear this from you, but it, it seems like this wasn't just a response to report, that this has made the program better.
Well, I, I would agree it's better, having a year-round program where the officers aren't running back to patrol and not losing their touch on the schools and maintaining. Both as a parent, I, I get to wear both hats as I look at this because I'm a, I'm a district parent and I also was the YSO sergeant before we were. I get to see it through both lenses. And I go to the football games and I see the interaction between the officers and the kids, it just, it makes me smile because, like I said earlier, we're always called to the negative and to have these positive opportunities to interact with these people who are going to be our police officers in the future. I think the programs, Chief Jepson started with the YSOs, and I think it's just, I, I think Beaverton is going to be the model for everyone else to follow. That's just my opinion.
That was where my head was going to, was that the, the level of training and preparedness that the entire institution demands of its, of the force is, is wonderful. But the specialized training and just the emotional intelligence that has to be stored up to do this kind of work is, it's, it's a lot, but I'm sure that, that for the officers that get to serve as part of this program, it's pretty dang rewarding. And having a son who goes to one of those high schools, I've seen those interactions, I've seen the kids, and it's, it does seem like there's, there's just so much more refinement and ability to communicate what the role is and build trust and let the kids know you're actually there for them, not, not to, not, not, not in a way other than just to make sure that they have a good school experience. And so thank you for the report today and, and looking forward to hearing how it goes over the next couple of years as you continue to ramp up through the changes.
All right, Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you, Ed and Chief. This is really good data and I've just got one question. I used to work with kids who have autism and I think back to one of the kids in particular really struggled when there were situations that were very tense or stressful or when there was police involvement. And I know mental health calls were mentioned in Sea Change Report, talked about them in the past. I'm wondering if you all can touch on either the data that you all collect, if you do, regarding interactions with kids who have intellectual or developmental disabilities or if you're involved at all in those. But just if you can touch on that, that topic a little bit, that would be great.
Sure. So generally the officers aren't called to the schools if a child is dysregulating. That's a school counselor, psychologist. We do interact with kids. If you've never been to it, one of the greatest days of the school year is Special Ed Field Day. It's held over at Champions Park. Our entire team goes. I'll put some photos out. It's, it's honestly, you can't leave that day without smiling. It's amazing. We, we do autism training, crisis intervention training, because sometimes some of these kids do leave campus and we help coordinate their return safely. So the officers do need to know how to respond to these kind of calls, but we're in no way called to the school because there's a, something going on in this bed classroom. That's, that's all school related.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you both for being here.
I just have a, one comment or, or a question. So there's, there was a discrepancy between the data that we collected as a BPD versus BSD, yellow and blue. Number one, why is that? Or can we, because when we get two different sets of numbers with the same incident, that's, and then they both publish two different numbers, that's, that could be interpreted differently. So I'd like to maybe sit down with the BSD and coordinate how we collect the data.
Yeah, so.
I don't know that it's as much the data's not the same, is that they are reporting demographics for the entire school district, which we don't serve the entire school district, as well as it's not a school-by-school breakdown in those demographics. So you could have one school that has, let's say, a higher Latino population of students and the dashboard will hopefully speak to this, will be able to kind of marry up those statistics better on a kind of school-by-school basis as opposed to this more homogeneous kind of look at it. But I think that's what you're seeing in those differences in blue and yellow.
Right, okay. That's all I had. Thank you so much. That's it? All right? Yeah, that's it. You're off. All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. This is time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance, amending ordinance number two zero five zero, the Beaverton Development Code relating to LU four two zero two four dash zero zero four zero three, Code Maintenance Project text amendment, TA four two zero two four dash zero zero four oh two. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary matters.
Good evening, Council President, City Council and Mayor. I'm Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. Tonight's hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions, then council will hear public testimony. After the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card found on the table by the entry doors. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. If you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined this meeting online, you can let the city recorder know you wish to speak by clicking on the raised hand. Each member of the public will have up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. Now I will explain the criteria the council must use to make its decision tonight, and then I will ask members of the council if they wish to make any disclosure. Council's decision on the adoption of the ordinance must be based on consideration of statewide planning goals and administrative rules adopted under ORS Chapter one ninety-seven, applicable federal or state statutes or rules, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro and the city's comprehensive plan and development code. Council may consider any relevant testimony that it receives. Failure to raise an issue during the city's hearing on this ordinance precludes, precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision to the city council, of the, of the city council to the State Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding include those who submit written comments or oral arguments. So this time I'd like to ask if any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest. Okay, let the record show there were no responses. Does any member of the audience wish, wish to challenge the ability of any member of the council to participate in this decision? Okay, let the record show no response. Council President, that concludes the preliminary legal matters.
Thank you. Let's proceed to the staff presentation.
Good evening, Council. I'm Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department. I'm just going to make a couple of opening remarks and then hand over the presentation to Associate Planner Elena Sasson, who is the project manager for this project. She's joining us remotely. I also am joined by Janet Fox, the current planning manager, who is on hand in case anyone has any questions. So I just want to open up by saying that this project is part of our ongoing effort to make sure that the development process is efficient and effective in implementing city policy. As staff reviews land use applications, we find things that are errors in the code that don't make sense. We find texts that conflicts with other codes in the city, and we keep actually running lists of these things. Some of you may recall the Omnibus Text Amendment that was last brought through to council in twenty nineteen. It's really housekeeping. We've changed the name of this to be Code Maintenance to remind us and everyone else that this is something we need to be doing on a regular basis, much more frequently than every four years. And so in addition to this text amendment, you can expect to see more frequent code maintenance projects come your way so that we can make sure we're keeping the development code in good working order. So with that, I am going to turn the presentation over to Elena.
Thank you, Anna, and hello, Mayor Beatty and counselors. My name is Elena Sasson. I'm an Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. I'd like to get things started just by providing a brief history for this project. Anna, if you could click to the next slide, please. Thank you. The Code Maintenance Project kicked off in earnest earlier this year. Our first big step was meeting with the Planning Commission in April for a work session where we introduced the project to the commissioners and asked for their feedback. We also attended a BCCI meeting in late May to give the committee a heads-up about the project and answer any questions that they may have. And then a citywide public notice was mailed in June to every property owner in Beaverton. Notices were also published in the newspaper, city hall, library and safety center. At the end of July, Planning Commission held a public hearing where the commission considered the full proposal and made a recommendation to city council to approve the proposed amendment. And this brings us to today's hearing where the council is being asked to consider and make a decision on the proposed text amendment to the Beaverton Development Code. If the council adopts the proposed changes, the new amended text would become effective in October of this year. The proposed changes to the Beaverton Development Code affects nearly every chapter of the code and cover a variety of different subjects. And because these changes are so diverse, staff have organized them into three primary categories. staff have, um, organized them into three primary categories. And these three primary categories are changes that are necessary to implement state law and are found to be consistent with existing city goals and policies, such as House Bill 3395 and Senate Bill 1537. Some changes are necessary to fix existing code sections that simply don't work, either because they are unclear, contradictory, or impractical to implement. And then there are a lot of proposed changes that be, can be considered miscellaneous, things such as removing references to code sections that no longer exist, adding new definitions, um, to better implement existing code language and things like that. The proposed changes are not intended to be major policy decisions, uh, but are, but rather aim to better, um, implement and, uh, and support existing city goals and policies. Staff will provide an example of these proposed amendments within, uh, these three different categories on the following slides. In response to House Bill 3395, um, single room occupancies are proposed to be added to the land use table. Um, HB 3395 requires that local governments allow for this type of housing development, uh, wherever residential uses are permitted. Another proposed amendment related to House Bill 3395 removes, um, the conditional use requirement for housing in the NS zone. And changes to Chapter 50, our Procedures Chapter, um, also proposes amendments in response to HB 30, uh, 3395, specifically updating the application review timelines for housing. In Chapter 40, um, the Applications Chapter, a new land use application is proposed to be created called the Housing Adjustment Application. It's proposed in response to Senate Bill 1537, which requires that cities, uh, provide a mechanism to grant minor adjustments to some standards for, um, certain housing developments. Examples of what we would consider fixing the existing codes are things like updating the approach to accessory structures and clarifying what standards apply, what standards don't apply, uh, to the variety of accessory structures that are pretty typical with, um, with most developments. It also includes updating requirements for single detached and middle housing design review applications. And part of these changes also include removing redundant reviews for historic landmarks in the downtown district. Um, fixing the code also includes adding more specificity to design standards and guidelines, um, which are intended to make it easier to interpret the code, um, and apply it consistent, consistently. And lastly, an example of changes that are, uh, intended to fix the code include looking at our, um, numerous definitions related to landscaping, consolidating them where possible and aligning them throughout the code. Some examples of miscellaneous changes include aligning the design review to approach across all zoning districts, correcting cross references throughout the code, adding new definitions in an effort to provide clarity and efficiency, and removing, um, language or code sections that have already previously been removed, um, and are no longer relevant or applicable. Lastly, staff just want to briefly address a supplemental memo dated August 20th, 2024 that should be part of the packet you received for this project. Um, this memo was provided to address a couple of very minor changes staff is proposing after the Planning Commission hearing was held on July 31st. Therefore, the Planning Commission did not see these edits. However, they are really minor and have no impact on, um, on staff's finding or the, the staff report. Um, and with that, uh, staff recommends that the city council approve the code maintenance project text amendment. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and, uh, staff is open to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions to the staff, of staff? No? Okay. Um, city recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak?
No, Council President, there is not.
Uh, there appears to be no member of public who wants to speak on this matter tonight. Um, that's it, right? Okay. Right here. So does, any member of council have any questions for staff? No one? Okay. Okay. Does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding the proposed legislation? No? Okay. Hearing no further questions from the council, the public hearing is now closed. Council may either adopt the proposed ordinance recommended by staff or take other action. But if other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what that other action is. Is there a motion regarding the ordinance?
Council President, I move that the council adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 24099 and ordinance, amending ordinance number 2050, the Beaverton Development Code, LU 4202400403, code maintenance project text amendment, TA 42024-00402.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? None? Okay. We are ready to vote for, uh, ready for a vote on the ordinance adoption? Would the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan is absent. Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Thank you.
So he passed. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a resolution establishing rates for the collection of solid waste. Before we begin, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
On tonight's, um, agenda, anyone wishing to speak on this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card found on the table nearby the doors in the back of the council chambers. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and you will be called. Uh, for those attending this meeting virtually, you may comment by telephone or on, um, online. If you've joined this meeting by phone, enter star nine to let the city recorder know that you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you join the meeting online, you can let the city recorder know that you wish to speak by clicking the raised hand feature. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record. After each person's comments, council members may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comments have concluded, uh, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions that's helpful to their decision regarding the proposed resolution. That's all.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Council President.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
For the record, I'm Scott Keller, Senior Program Manager of our Sustainability and Recycling Programs. And I have a brief overview to supplement the information in the Agenda Development Packet. Next slide, please. I'm here tonight to give you three brief service updates that were part of last year's rate package that we presented to you.
For the record, I'm Scott Keller, Senior Program Manager in Sustainability and Recycling. And I'm here tonight to give you three brief service updates that were part of last year's rate process, along with an overview of the proposed rate increase for tonight. Next slide. First update is on Beaverton's Reduced Rate Program, which offers a 75% discount off of standard monthly garbage rates to low income households meeting program criteria. This program was started earlier this year upon your approval last year at this time, and was modeled after similar programs in Washington County and the city of Hillsborough. Next slide. In each of the four phase-in years of this program, we hope to enroll up to 250 new eligible program participants. To fund the program, garbage rates will increase each of those four years by about 25 cents per month for the most common cart size to enable the discount for low income households. The city has a contract with Community Action of Washington County to process the applications and to determine whether the program applicant eligibility criteria are being met. As of this point in the year, we're about two-thirds through the calendar year, and we're right at two-thirds of the number of, of, um, participants that we'd like to register in the first year. So we're at about 167 registrations as of a couple of weeks ago. Next slide. On the second update is for the Residential Composting Program. We expanded it earlier this year to, um, higher density housing, which are people who live in condos, townhouses, and row houses, that did not historically need yard debris carts and therefore didn't have home composting capacity. The program now offers a 32 gallon roll cart instead of the standard 60 gallon cart to enable those households to utilize the service. In the first few months of that program, 60 households have signed up. We recognize further that there is a desire to expand the program to apartments, and will be conducting a pilot program at some multifamily communities this fiscal year to inform the development of a, an expansion of composting to apartment communities, um, probably beginning in 2026. And next year at some point around this time, we'll come back to you with what that program would look like. Third update is about a new rate schedule for bulky waste, large items that don't fit into the roll carts. The old methodology charged an hourly rate to pick those items up. The new rate itemizes the most common items and lists a price that is to be picked up and then properly disposed, enabling transparency with the customer about what it will cost rather than just a $70 per hour charge that doesn't really tell them until it's already picked up. All of that program is going smoothly. We will continue to monitor it and make recommended adjustments if needed in the future. The public hearing for tonight is proposed for a rate increase that would be effective on October 1st. The city reviews hauler operational and financial data annually to determine whether garbage rates are covering the cost of providing services. The cost of disposal, often called the tip fee for it being tipped out onto the floor, is the largest single component of our monthly garbage rates. On July 1st of this year, the Metro tip fee for processing our garbage increased by almost 12% or just over $16 a ton, which along with labor, fuel, and other general costs, as well as the Reduced Rate Program, will lead to this proposed increase tonight. Our proposal is to increase it by a dollar per month for the most common cart size of 32 gallons, which is about 62% of Beaverton residential customers. And then similar increases for those who have the smaller and larger cart sizes, along with a 5.6 increase to commercial rates, which vary by container size and the frequency of service for that particular customer. We also want to make note about a factor that's not directly impacting our rates this year, but will at some point in the future, and that is fleet replacement. Franchisees can purchase new garbage trucks according to our fleet replacement schedule, and those, have those costs factored into the rate structure over a seven-year amortization period. Over the past four year, years, few replacement trucks that have been ordered have actually been delivered, and therefore they're not showing up into the rate cycle. So the rates are kind of behind what the purchase of new trucks ought to be. Garbage trucks are expensive at over $400,000 to $500,000 per truck, and therefore when they do hit the rate structure, it will have some impact. And when they're all bunched together, um, that will cause some angst and heartburn for councilors and the community and staff. Therefore, we're encouraging ourselves to just keep up with all the rest of the rate structure to keep it up to date and current, so that when we do need to start incorporating the fleet into the rates, we won't have a bigger than ordinary or bigger than expected, um, rate increase. This slide, my paper's mixed up here. Um, this would, this increase on the left side kind of shows the history of rate increases in the last 30 years. Um, this would, we've had about nine or 10 of the increases, and this would be the smallest percentage and the smallest dollar increase of those that we've done since 1994. We also, though, recognize that in light of all of the inflationary activities in the country, that any rate increase is going to be impacting of our community. But we just would note that this one is smaller. How do we compare with other jurisdictions? That's on the chart on the right. And you'll see in the first column are those jurisdictions that have essentially the same service level that we do, and we're definitely on the lower end of those rates. In the second column are other communities, but they may have a lesser degree of service or a less frequent service for some lines, um, and what their rates would be. And then at the bottom, it shows what our rate, what, um, our rate of a dollar increase per month is compared to what other jurisdictions are due. We recognize that our franchise haulers are, um, providing a strong service to their customers and are working to create the rates as low as possible. Last slide. Um, this concludes my overview. We note that pending some of these activities with fleet replacement, metro tip fees in the future, um, the Reduced Rate Program that we may need to come back again next year, um, for another increase, but we will talk about that at this time. Um, that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff from council? Okay, Counselor Dugger?
I have a few questions. Um, I'm struggling a little bit with the, the just general cost increase like that, that I understand fleet replacement. I understand, that has always been the case. When, when I look at the, the number of increases, we are doing them. It seems like we did one, uh, what was it, 2021, 2023, and this year and potentially next year, 3% every year. When you look at the previous six years, we were doing it, you know, we did it twice over a six-year period. And certainly they were buying garbage trucks then. So help me understand that a little bit more. I know that metro tipping fees increased, but, but this kind of nipping three to four, five percent every single year is, is like it's, I'm getting skeptical because we know inflation has dropped, right? Like a couple of years ago, fine, but like it is, you know, it is a lot lower now. So help me understand that a little bit more.
Biggest single impact, I would say, is the metro tip fee, that they are finding that their operational costs of both operating the transfer stations and the, and the household hazardous waste system and residential, just kind of the, the RID patrol, which picks up kind of unclaimed garbage or illegally dropped garbage. All of those programs have increased in cost, as well as they're implementing the regional waste plan are causing some of their costs to go up. And at the same time that the, I mean, of tons that are being, um, processed are going down. So if the costs are staying stable and there's less ton, then the cost per ton is actually going to go up. Um, local governments have been pushing back to Metro to be more transparent about those costs. They are beginning to work more with elected leaders about those costs so that they can hear directly from your voice and are making some possible changes for how they're going to process their rates in the future that would include local government elected leaders far sooner in the process. But at this point, the rating, the metro tip fee last year went up like 10 or 12%. It's 12% this year. Um, a couple of years ago, they forecasted some of this was happening, but they would, they indicated then that, they said a glide path or you should expect an 8% increase. It's actually gone up substantially more than that for two years in a row, and that's what's really driving ours to go, um, multiple years in a row. I know that doesn't completely answer your question, but that's the general.
I just, and, and I hear you, and I, it's reminding me to engage with them a little bit more because like to me, uh, at the end of the day, like, what happens if we vote no? If this council votes no tonight, what happens? Genuine question. Yeah. Does that mean the rates stay the same, but metro charges higher to the, to haulers? Is that correct?
That would be correct. The, the rate would stay the same. The haulers would be paying more, and then at the end of the year, they would make less, um, of their operating margin than they're entitled to by code.
Um, and then from an operational perspective, if we get in the habit of just raising the rates every year, like, what are the operational onuses to, to the, to our haulers, right? To, to reduce their cost structure, to, to be more efficient, if you know you can just come to the, to Metro and the Beaverton City Council every year and you're going to get a significant increase, like, what are the drivers, what are the pressure drivers that we have other than this rate increase to make them do better, right? To make them do the same thing every business in America is confronted with right now, right? It just seems like every time, there's a rate increase request. And, and I just, I'm, I'm getting to the point where, what are we, what are, what are my residents getting out of this rate? Rate, I guess is what it comes down to. Like what, what is a Beaverton resident that is going to have to pay more? Not a drastic amount more, but what are they going to get out of this?
Hopefully, they're going to get consistent service, better service than they even have in the past. Um, how do we keep that service from work, um, from increasing, how do we keep the rates from increasing too much? Would be just like ongoing communications. We recognize with the haulers that, they do recognize that their customer base pays that. the haulers that, they do recognize that their customer base pays that. And our, I'm not answering this question very well. And we work with them to try to just, when they turn in all their annual reports, just to make sure that the costs are consistent, that they're predictable, that they are, that they're legitimate. They turn in their reports each March. We have a CPA that goes through them and notes when there are changes that are out of ordinary, or this one went up way higher than what we would expect. But all of those are really evaluated every year so that we can determine whether it is really a legitimate request. We can talk more separately about how we go through all that process, if you'd like, so that you're prepared more for that future.
At the end of the day, like, I look at the previous six years, and we did it twice.
Yeah.
And we're doing it every year now. And the service was consistent. It's great service now. Like, I just, I don't know that we need to buy better service, you know, and those are the questions I'm getting. So I'm, of course, turning them around to you, right? And then my final question is around bulk services. It seems like I've heard from a number of people, and then I've recently experienced it, we don't offer as much bulk service. So I know, like, in some neighboring jurisdictions, you can have things like the bagster and rentable dumpsters for moving projects and things like that. And I could tell you, we sat on hold for a couple hours trying to figure all that out, and it still wasn't a great experience. So I think we need to, more of a comment, we need to figure that out. If we're going to consider giving rate increases, I'm actually going to request better service, right? And that's a minimum consideration for me, is we need things like more options for bulk service. We need, you know, we need better small business accounts, that sort of thing. So I guess that's it. I don't think I have any more.
Thank you. Mayor Beatty?
Thanks for the presentation, Scott. And maybe I missed this in your presentation, but one of your points to Councilor Duggar was that we're going to get better service for a rate increase. Can you tell me what that better service is than what I get now?
I probably misspoke when I said those words. I mean, it should be maintain the service you have now rather than better, because we're not proposing any significant service changes with this rate package.
I know it's hard to present to council, but that is a big error, because I also think this is a, this is a pretty big increase that we've done multiple times now. And this is not a critique on the haulers. They're responding to metro. My critique is on metro and their tipping fee. And I've sat through their tipping fee conversations. I've been heavily involved. I'm not the councilor that needs more information. I just flat out don't agree. And so I think for me, I mean, I'm leaning towards voting no, because I keep telling metro over and over again what's important to our residents. There's nowhere to take bulk recycling. The closest place is nowhere near Beaverton, and I'm inclined to hold my vote hostage until we get some of this better service, because right now, we're asking people to pay more for a service that they're not getting everything that they should be getting. And I also am looking at other areas, you know, how is Washington County not raising their rates as high as us? And I'm confused across, and I've done this eleven times now, why can, why can the county say we're going to charge less than the city? It's the same hauler.
You could start with the end of that comment. One of the difference why the county's rate is less is because their recycling frequency and their compost frequency are every other week rather than weekly. So they are basically sending out a garbage truck a week and then one other service per week, and we're sending out all three of them every week. And so there's a difference.
Have we done an analysis on, do we need that? I mean, part of the problem that we need to have weekly recycling is the fact they're not offering bulk recycling. Is the county offering bulk recycling?
Yeah.
So they get bulk recycling and pay less money than us. This does not seem like a good deal for the residents of Beaverton.
They do not get bulky recycling. They don't get anything more than what we get. They just get recycling picked up every other week and compost picked up every other week. They have larger ninety-gallon carts rather than sixty-gallon carts, but in general, Beaverton residents have the ability to put more material in the carts over a two-week period than unincorporated county residents.
So have we done an analysis and asked our community, would you rather have a larger cart every two weeks and pay less money? Or have we just assumed that residents in Beaverton want this service every single week?
We have not done the analysis recently. When we started the program back in two thousand and five or six, we did an analysis of how frequently we would want the service. We haven't updated it much since. Part of that is because metro has a regional service requirement that if you want to opt for something less than weekly, you have to get special permission. And a few years ago, they indicated that they were not going to give that special permission until some other broader decisions on metro's system had occurred, which have not yet occurred.
I mean, I am very much considering voting no. I'm going to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say tonight, but I have been pretty transparent in both my conversations over our last three hikes and with metro, that there is not a solution in place for our residents around bulk recycling, like Styrofoam. If you have something delivered from Ikea and it's lots of boxes, we don't have, they are not offering any solutions for Beaverton, and they continue to offer no solutions for Beaverton. So I'm not inclined to go along with this until we can bring them to the table and get a solution that our residents have been asking us before. When we lost Far West Fiber, we lost a massive investment in our community for people to go to things, and I am sick of asking for this to be solved. So I think tonight, I'm going to use my vote till I get something, a better deal for Beaverton, because it's not good enough for me to have the status quo.
Two quick responses to that. First, on some of the overall underservice for Washington County area residents, there is, I mean, it's not going to help for this year, but metro is nearing the final stages of a system facilities plan that would kind of describe where future facilities are going to be located for the next twenty years. I believe there will be some elected leader outreach about that sometime soon. They presented some of that information to staff a week ago and indicated that that is in the process of coming. And the second on the other-
Metro, before they ask us to increase rates, would do a little bit of extra work reaching out to elected officials ahead of a public hearing where I'm the one holding the bag for their decision-making.
I can definitely continue to pass that message on. And as far as recycling overall, there will be some changes to the state recycling program a year from now. Next July, the statewide recycling modernization act kicks in. It will bring some depot recycling to Beaverton, the whole metro region, and the rest of the state that will provide depots that won't be maybe on the scale of Far West Fibers, that will bring some of that material to our area. There are expected to be, although they're not located yet, six to eight general drop-off points in the Beaverton area for residents to take items that are on the statewide recycling list or a statewide depot list that are, the producer responsibility organization is going to be responsible for funding, that will be paid for by producers and not as part of the rate structure. At some point in the next few months, it probably would be appropriate for me to come back and give a presentation to council on the recycling modernization act and how we expect that to impact what's going on in Beaverton and should improve services. But it's really unrelated to this particular rate proposal.
Thank you. Councilor Tifna?
So I serve on IMPAC and was at the meeting where this was discussed. I think it might be helpful to our conversation tonight if I refer back to my notes a little bit, because it was fireworks during that particular meeting. And I was still very new. I think it was my second meeting, and so I was kind of no context for even how IMPAC really worked, which, for those that don't know, it's representatives from the counties and the cities that come together to weigh in on the decisions that metro has in front of them. And this one had started before I got there. They were getting an update on it, and there was a lot of disappointment in the room, because the expectation had been set that it was going to be around eight percent in terms of the increase. And then metro came back saying it was going to be closer to eleven point six. And people wanted to know why there was a discrepancy there, and could we start with eight and then review it later? There was a lot of pushback, saying, no, we feel really comfortable where it's at right now. There was also a statement from the metro representative, one of the commissioners, who said that equality, economics, and environment ranked higher than rate predictability in their survey. And that was one of the key factors that they had in making their decisions on how they were going to move money around within the program. And a lot of the pushback from the cities and the counties was that for every one percent increase, it translates into about a four percent increase for residents, because those jurisdictions have to turn around and pass that cost on. And I think that where it ended was that there was a fear that illegal dumping would increase because the rates would become too high and that we were just continuing, to Councilor Duggar's point, to the mayor's point of continue to see these increases, but not seeing any improvements necessarily. And especially out in Washington County, to the mayor's point, access to where these trucks are tipping is pretty far. There's, so the infrastructure is lacking as well. I would be very curious to know how other cities are responding to public hearings just like this. And I also don't quite understand what the impacts would be if we said no tonight. What would that impact look like for the city? What would the impact look like for our residents and for the haulers? But I do agree with the mayor that, you know, sitting on a panel or a committee with a bunch of representatives and not feeling like you're really being heard is very frustrating when it's with a governmental organization that has such profound impacts on your bottom line and the overall jurisdictional partnership. So I'm just tossing that out for further consideration by the council, but I'm also interested in exploring what it would look like if we did not pass this tonight.
Okay. Councilor Teeter?
Scott, I've got one question about the reduced rate program. I really like it. I'm looking at the table. It looks like the impact this year for thirty-two gallon rate increase or on the monthly impact for the thirty-two gallon rate is about forty-eight cents. And it sounds like the average increase for that thirty-two gallon bucket is about a dollar. Am I reading that right? So our reduced rate program is about half of the increase that we're feeling. Is that right?
Close. It would be really half of that, in the sense that the first of the, in the chart that you have, I think it's on a slide, both slides before that. That's right. Yes, that slide.
Oh, I see. I see. I was looking at the total impact over the two, over a few years, but we're just looking from last year to this.
Essentially, there's a quarter, twenty-five cents last year that's already in the rate, and then additional twenty-five cents for this year's rate that would basically pay for another two hundred and fifty households to be added to that this coming year. And we expect that that would be about a quarter a year for four years to fund that over that period of time and then remain stable after that. So half of the ninety-six cents for this first year. So of the dollar that we're proposing, basically seventy-five cents of it is really attributable to operational costs and the metro tip fee, and twenty-four, twenty-five cents would be attributable to the reduced rate program.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Harma Prak?
Thank you. I'm very grateful that Councilor Tifna takes so many notes, because you can see, like, the verbatim meaning from, which is just amazing. It's great. Like, knowing it's so long ago, too, when we get to give input and then that you can recall it, it's helpful. It's also frustrating that IMPAC is even saying no, and then, like, we're still sitting here. And I recognize that that is not, you know, this is one of those don't-shoot-the-messenger moments, right? And there's also the ask that our haulers are saying, yeah, we need this, here's why. I also love the reduced rate program. I think that's something that really reflects our values as a city, is reflective of a program that we asked for. And I'm glad to see it grow, right? And to continue to add that in, to make sure that we can expand to households that need it. One part that I'm confused about, in addition to the metro tip fee increase, I'm not really understanding how the fleet vehicle replacement fits in, because it's saying that these trucks were ordered over the last four years and they just haven't been delivered yet. So were the fees for those trucks paid for years ago? Or are we now, like, paying for back-ordered trucks?
I should probably have pulled that out and done that on a separate slide. It's more because the, we're not paying for trucks that have not yet been delivered. So that really, the only part of the rates that are paying for fleet are existing trucks that have already been here, and very few have been delivered of the new ones. A lot of them are out of date and ready to be replaced and will need to be, and have been ordered, but they're back-ordered, and therefore they're not here. We don't let them, put them into the rates and start, we don't start paying them until they start paying for the actual trucks. So we anticipate that's going to happen, and it's going to be a larger number than what we have typically, usually it was a really smooth cycle of, hey, a few trucks drop off and a couple trucks are added. We're going to be adding more trucks in the future. That is all legally and accounting-wise okay for them to do, because they are replacing trucks that do need to be replaced. They're just going to be doing more of them at once than what we would have anticipated, which is partly-
Because of the catch-up.
-reasons staff is wanting to just make sure, so that they will catch up. And we want to make sure that when that catch-up happens, that we're doing it for, hopefully, just the minimal amount needed for the trucks and not trying to also catch up from, hey, we didn't raise rates last year for this, this, and this, and now we need to catch up with both trucks and some of last year's rate increase that we did not grant.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it is hard, because we are the ones that have to adopt the rate increases, and we have adopted rate increases for, like, every single service. And like, every time a rate increase has come, since I've been on council, we have adopted it. There are certain programs like this, that there's been this responsiveness to say, and part of that investment in the rate increase is to help fund these other programs, right, to take care of our residents. To me, that is a benefit we're getting. We're not getting a benefit from metro, right? To Mayor Beatty's point, like, there's just this lack of plan around how to deal with solid waste in our area. And I just also cannot help but think of, like, are they using this to innovate? They're not, right? It's status quo. Are they thinking of ways to reimagine how we deal with waste? No. And so that's also kind of hard for me to digest. I am inclined to say, let's cover the increase for our reduced rate program and for the hauler's fleet replacement and not the metro part. And I don't even know if the math can be broken down in such a way, right? I know that the dollar is kind of a clean number. It makes it easier to deal with, but, like, to send a message to metro. But I think the reason why I'm really struggling with this is that if this cost is just passed on to the haulers, and then the haulers just have to eat it because we didn't take the rate increase, I think that's, like, where I'm struggling. I think that everything I'm hearing from council is so valid. But I guess I don't know, and I, Mayor, I'd be kind of curious if you have any wisdom here to share about, like, well, yes, voting no can make a point to metro, but they're not the ones that feel the consequence of it. So that's what I'm grappling with right now and not really knowing how to deal with this. And then I also just realized we're in a public hearing, so I don't know that I can ask the mayor that. But that's, that's where I'm struggling with, Scott, is, you know, so it's helpful to kind of know where the funds are coming from and how they got there. But that's what I'm grappling with.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I was, I put my name in the chat to suggest basically what you're suggesting now. I think that the haulers pre-purchased the truck with the gentleman's agreement that we would purchase them, and so I want to make sure that we are doing that. I want to fund the reduced rate fee. And I think, you know, I have said in so many meetings with other mayors across many things where we're all talking about this tip fee. I don't know if mayors are whipping votes across their council, but if they want Beaverton involved in a tipping fee, they need to answer the questions that I've continued to raise. And it's not just what Mayor Beatty thinks, it's what our residents are asking. And this becomes our geographical location compared to metro dump sites. There is not one close to us. And it is a issue of working-class families being able to access a service they're already paying for. And so I would suggest, I mean, I don't know where the rest of the council is, that we fund the trucks that we've agreed to, that we fund the reduced rate, and we send Scott back to metro with our message of, we're not getting a good deal and we're not voting. That's what I would like to do tonight, but if the council wants to- That's what I would like to do tonight, but if the council wants to move forward on the vote, I will be a no vote on the whole package.
Council President.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of a, there is an obligation under this franchise agreement that the haulers make a certain return on on their business. So the charter says a 9% is the target. The operating margin is supposed to equal 9% of the franchise wide gross revenues. And then it says also that the city is not required to change its its fees, provided that that 9% target, it can be as low as seven and as high as 11. So if you're making too little or making too much, you can adjust. The target is for a 9% return operating margin. These changes that are being made, I take no position on that. But I think it would be best to come back at a later meeting, possibly the next meeting, but it may take longer than that. With the type of fee schedule that you're discussing, which is, I understand, go ahead and fund the truck purchases, go ahead and fund the lower cost program, but the tip fee, take that out. But I think the city is obligated to do the math of, will you still be making your operating margin that's acquired? Will be in that range? And if it's not, then we have to have a discussion.
So do we need to stay the public hearing, or what is your recommendation? Do we stay the public hearing and come back?
I would continue the public hearing. That way you've opened the public hearing and 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 you're just, you're taking more time to get more information specifically about this tipping fee. And do we really have to increase to the extent that's being requested? Or can we, within the range of what's described in that ordinance, not increase the fee as much as be?
Okay, Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Thank you. That led me to one more question. And that is, how do our haulers get charged by Metro? Because I would, you know, I'd be curious to know, like, can you protest and not pay the increase in fee? Right? I mean, like, is there, is there something here that like kind of helps send the message? I don't know. So I'm curious how it's charged, because like there's, you know, if it's like every time you drive in and and the hauler has to pay the fee, that like, that wouldn't, my idea wouldn't work, and it's probably a terrible idea. But I'd be really, really curious to know, how's that fee charged, right? And including like while we're doing some different math, understand, like, how does this all come to life? And the other thing that it's probably in here, but I don't recall, is when does the rate increase go into effect, right? Do we have time to to continue this to a date certain to complete the hearing?
To your first question, how do the haulers pay it? They all have like electronic IDs on their trucks. They drive by a sensor that identifies the truck. It's then weighed, and then, and they, that all weight calculations eventually leads to an electronic, electronic bill that they get, I believe, once a month. So it's not a, they don't pay it at the scale house at that moment, but they have a bill that they're actually paid. If you want more in-depth answer to that, we do have a couple haulers here tonight, and they could answer that question. To your question about when does this take effect, we typically like to give about 30 days. We were proposing that this would be effective October 1st, slightly less than 30 days. It doesn't have to be October 1st. We have done this as late as December. So if you were not to make a decision to to not make a decision tonight, we could reconsider what the effective date would be that would work, but would certainly be able to come back for your next meeting in two weeks with some of the information that you've requested so that we can identify the the various components of the rate, if that's what your desire is for this evening.
Okay, and when did Metro's increased tip fee go into effect?
It went into effect in July. So they've been paying the higher rate so far since July, August, September.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Duggar.
No, I was just going to say, I don't think I have enough information to make, so I I hope we we pause this.
So I'd like to continue the public hearing, listen to what public has to say, and then we'll go after that. Okay. All right, I'll now open the public hearings. City Recorder, is there anyone to speak on this proposed resolution?
Council President, there is not.
There appears to be no member of public who wishes to comment on this matter tonight. What is the next course of action?
I think right now I would just ask for a motion, excuse me. Right now, I think the proper motion would be to continue the hearing to.
I would suggest in two weeks, I'll be out of town for the first meeting in October, so if we can get it done.
So next, so next, not next, but then after that council meeting.
I think that's October 17th, correct?
September 17th.
September 17th? Okay, so I need to now close the he, public hearing.
No, no.
I cannot stay.
I'll make a.
You're not going to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the date certain of September 17th, 2024, so we can get the questions that we have tonight answered and then come back with our our action items.
Second.
Wait.
I'm going to just ask for a vote on that motion. It's been seconded.
Okay, this motion was made by Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg, seconded by Duggar. Any discussion? No, we're coming back on September 17th. Okay. Okay, we are ready for a vote. City Recorder, please call the roll.
So let me make sure I understand for the record, we're continuing the public hearing for this item to September 17th. It was, the motion was made by Hartmeyer-Prigg, seconded by Duggar. Thank you. Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan is absent. Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnun?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. 601.
Okay. All right, I missed you, Counselor Teeter. No, here, I think we're okay, okay. All right, we'll move on. Okay, this is the time and place for public hearing and an ordinance amending Beaverton Code Chapter 3.11 Relocation Assistance Procedure and repealing Beaverton Code Chapter 3.21 Residential Tenancies. Now I call to order the public hearing. Before we begin, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Good evening, council. Once again, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney, the city attorney, and also the staff for this item. So let me quickly go over. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card on the table nearby the doors at the back of council chambers. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. For those attending this meeting virtually, you may comment by telephone or online. If you've joined the meeting by phone, enter star nine to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined this meeting online, you can let the city recorder know you wish to speak by clicking the raise hand feature. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record. Each person's comments, council members may, after each person's comments, council members may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Let's proceed to the staff presentation.
Okay, so council president, council and mayor, this is a very straightforward ordinance amendment. The details are in the agenda bill, so I will just cover it very briefly. Essentially, Chapters 3.11 and 3.21 of the Beaverton Code are are outdated. Chapter 3.11 Relocation Assistance Procedure was adopted in 1983, and it hasn't been updated since then. It contains old references to statutes and regulations and an outdated process for for reviewing claims. So the ordinance will update those references as well as provide a more streamlined process, administrative process. Chapter 3.21 Residential Tenancies was adopted to provide renter protections during the COVID pandemic. It incorporated a state law that has since been repealed, and so the ordinance must also be repealed. Or Chapter 3.21 must also be repealed in this ordinance. Questions?
All right, is there any questions to of staff? No? Okay, City Recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak?
No, Council President, there is not.
Okay, does any member of the council have any questions for staff? Again, no, okay. Does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding the proposed legislation?
I have no further comments, thank you.
Okay, hearing no further questions from the council, the public hearing is now closed. The council may either adopt the proposed ordinance recommended by staff or or take other action. But if other action is proposed, the proposed, the motion must include a specific direction as to what that other action is. Is there a motion regarding the ordinance?
Yes, Council President, I move that the city council adopt city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 24110 and ordinance amending the Beaverton Code Chapter 3.11 Relocation Assistance Procedure and repealing B.C. Chapter 3.21 Residential Tenancies.
Second.
The motion was proposed by Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg and seconded by Counselor Tivnun. Any discussion? Good. We're ready for a vote on ordinance adoption. Would the City Recorder please call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Tivnun?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan is absent. Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
601.
All right, good. The final item on the agenda is council new business. Does anyone have anything they wish to share? You got anything to say, Mayor?
Excellent job tonight, Edward. I know every time I leave town to do a remote meeting, I stick you with all the proclamations, but I appreciate your good support. Good, good meeting facilitation on a tough meeting tonight, getting us to a point to stay the meeting.
All right. All right, that concludes our meeting tonight, and the meeting is adjourned.